I'd like to call to order the special meeting of Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for July 7th at 4:30 PM. First thing we're going to do, since it's a special meeting, go right to business. If you please, caller.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Dunning?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Paragon?
Here.
Mayor Welkerson?
Here.
And the first item we'd like to do is to thank the Bowling Green District of the United Methodist Church for a presentation they have and invite Pastor Rick Bardor. What is your title now?
Yeah, still pastor.
Still pastor? Okay, well, come on right up here. The Commission's going to join us as we accept this check.
Mayor. Tony's got it.
I'm sitting after him. Can you guys see the check?
Nobody seems to have a check.
Well, I have one. Joe's got one.
I've got one in my pocket. Waiting for money and cash.
Well, on behalf of the Foundry, its board, the children, the single moms, the hardworking moms and dads in the West End, the soccer field that is in the process of being built, we're getting closer every day, we'll be always a hope for our friends and families in the West End. So, I want to thank the City Commissioners and Mayor, the City staff who helped a lot of details. Brent Belcher, the Park staff, what a tremendous group to work with. And there's a real buzz in the West End. There are several things happening down there that are good things, but we feel privileged to be a partner with the City of Bowling Green. And what we all done with the soccer field has created a whole renovation of our building. We spent another $20,000 while preparing to launch a high-quality preschool. And in conjunction with our opponent, which is the Defense, we're working closely with them. They have been supportive, which is what we know, approximately one-fourth of our children around North County live in poverty or right here. The statistics are that traditionally against, two-thirds of the children not test-ready, kindergarten-ready. And we're going to be one piece of the puzzle that's been worked in our community in a lot of ways. So, children in kindergarten that are ready, they're not 18 months old. So, we believe education and spiritual values make the difference. They're the one, two things that make it happen. So, the buzz is for the soccer field to be built and out here all around our community. Given that for many of the community in the West End, this is their major sport and they are super excited. And while we are thankful to host that field, we continue to give credit to the City of Bowling Green, their vision and your vision is clear. So, Brent Belcher received a check a week ago and actually put it in his bank. I thought I had a check to give you all, so I borrowed one from the mayor. Yeah, so I'm going to give you another $20,000.
Yeah.
But we're not only a partner by life, values, to help people. The Foundry has given $15,000, and so I'm going to give you your check back as a pretend check and say thank you. We are blessed and look forward to being finished in September, October, and start playing soccer there.
I've gone and cashed a $20,000 check real quick.
Yes, sir.
This project was the initial thought of Commissioner Billy Walter. He worked hard for this project and tonight... Huh? I thought you were telling me to stop.
No, I was just trying to listen. I couldn't hear.
Oh, we can't hear?
Yeah, it's hard to hear in here.
It's kind of the usual thing with us, that he is deserving of the credit for this project being built in the West End. He worked hard. He talked to everybody, I believe, in Bowling Green pertaining to getting this project implemented, and he is deserving of the credit for this. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Any other awards or recognitions other than this one? I want to recognize Master Police Officer Ernie Steph. On his retirement, or just July 1st, he retired after 18 years with the city, but he had time with other agencies, and we wish him well in his new ventures. And let's see, let's go to the approval of minutes for the regular meeting on June 16th, 2015.
Summate.
Second. I have to talk up. Was that you?
Helen Williams, yes.
Okay, did you get that? Rick, London Rick. Okay. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
First item is the second reading of Ordinance BG 2015-19.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving Amendment Number Four to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2015.
Summate.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning.
Yes, yes. I was working with my mind here.
Okay, Mr. Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. As the Commission knows, this is its way, our way of managing the overall budget process. We do this through amendments. This is our fourth amendment of the year. We're always proud to say that the City of Bowling Green keeps its budget in line and doesn't overspend the amount of money people give us, and this process helps us to do that. This is the second reading, so the rationales were sunshine last time. If you'd liked them repeated, Jeff could work on that.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We would like to know, we will be bringing you one more at the next meeting for some cleanup items before we close the books for FY 15, so...
All right. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2015-119.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Shawn A. Weeks and the probationary appointment of Aaron L. Baloo to the position of Assistant Chief Financial Officer in the Finance Department.
Summate.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febo.
Approximately nine years ago, I was proud to appoint Jeff Mizel with your approval as the new CFO for the city. He's here tonight to present to you, I think equally as proud to him, it's the reorganization of the department involving the creation of two assistant positions to free Jeff from the day-to-day needs to manage every, almost every employee there and to rely on some staff to help manage the needs of the department. So, I'd like to turn it over to Jeff, and I think he has some comments to make.
Yes, this is... I'm not used to these microphones. This is part of the reorganization where you all allowed me to create these two assistant CFO positions, and I thank you and thank you for allowing me to do that. First one I'd like to note is a promotion of Shawn Weeks that we're recommending. Shawn's been with the city since 2006 and is currently serving as our Chief Accountant. Shawn's actually worked on both sides of the aisle, revenues and expenditures, so he has a broad knowledge of the Finance Department overall. He's been heavily involved with the budgeting every year, with helping me set the revenue budget forecast for that. Several other big projects, such as the New World implementation we did back in 07, he was key in that implementation, and he is also very involved in the TIF every year, the calculations, making sure we do that right, of the city's and as well as the state's calculation. Has a very thorough understanding of preparing financial statements in accordance with GASB and numerous other areas of finance, with cash management, investments, fiscal year enclosing. And I just believe with his education, his experience with us, technical expertise, he's going to be able to give us a lot of good support. He also has a certification in, with GFOA, is a certified professional, I'm sorry, yeah, certified professional finance officer. So, I'm recommending him for the overseeing the revenue side of the department. We did, we had 29 applicants, interviewed six candidates, two were internal, four external. This next candidate, I guess you would call her an external candidate, but it's Aaron Baloo. We're recommending her for the other assistant CFO position for the accounting side of the department. Aaron is currently an Assistant Director of Finance for the Metropolitan Development and Housing Agency in Nashville. Prior to this position, Aaron was with the city for 12 years in the Finance Department, working her way up the line. When she got the opportunity to go to Nashville, she was the Chief Accountant. But Aaron's also been instrumental in several big projects over the years, with the most recent one being the in-house production of the CAFR. She was spearheaded that last year, got that started, also key in the software conversion we did in '07. And she was the first to implement the popular annual financial report that you all see with the pictures and graphs. It summarizes our CAFR that we hand out to the public each year and is also very involved with GFOA. She's on the National Committee of the Governmental, the National Committee for the Accounting, Auditing and Financial Reporting and is very well-versed in GASB reporting. And we feel with her education, experience, again, her technical expertise and just her desire to make finance and city better organization, she's going to be a good fit for this position as well. So, I respectfully submit these two recommendations to you. And again, I humbly, humbly thank you for allowing me to do these two moves, and I'm very excited in the direction that we're going to be able to go with finance and moving ahead. So, thank you again.
Any other comments or questions? I think Shawn and Aaron are with us here today, and they're going to stand up so we can put their picture on TV so that everybody knows who they are. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Unless there's any other comments, please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Municipal Order 2015-120.
Municipal Order approving the career path advancement of Jacob A. Boost to the position of Operations Technician One in the Public Works Department.
Summate.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. Mr. Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a career path in our Public Works Departments that allows employees who enter essentially as a laborer too to go through what are called the books, their training protocols. Couple important ones of those is a CDL as well as various safety requirements and learning tools and putting in six-month. Jacob was able to pass those books, and we're here tonight to honor his efforts, to ask you to essentially promote him to Operation Tech One. Jeff, is Jacob here? Hey, he's here.
Congratulations. I think I recognize some of the people there around you too, so thank y'all for coming to support him. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Municipal Order 2015-120.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointments of Matthew B. Irving and Roy D. Rogers to the position of Police Officer in the Police Department.
Summate. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. Mr. Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. As the Commission knows and most of all of us involved know that training, hiring and training a new police officer is a very expensive but necessary undertaking. It's always advantageous to us when we have certified officers who've been through the academy and have had their training paid by other municipalities to decide to improve their careers by coming to work for the City of Bowling Green. Tonight, we're honored to have two of those officers, Matthew Irvin and Roy D. Rogers, come. One, Mr. Irvin comes to us from WKU. I think someone else I know once worked there. And Mr. Rogers comes from us from Campbellsville. I believe both of the principals are here.
Gentlemen, this is your opportunity to stand for us to recognize you. Congratulations. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2015-121.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointments of Matthew B. Irving and Roy D. Rogers to the position of Police Officer in the Police Department.
Summate. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. Mr. Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the critically important positions in Neighborhood and Community Services is the position of Code Enforcement Inspector. It's probably the department that gets a lot of your attention, and we need frontline people to go out and to inspect our community. We had some changes there recently, and we went back to an old list, and thankfully we found Mr. Shad Goratsky and had applied before, and we're honored to have him back. And he has experience in a lot of the critical things. The most important one is dealing with authority. He's done that through working in jail, 911 center, and as being a firefighter. Brent is, is he here? No, sir.
All right.
But we're happy to have him nonetheless.
I understand. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Municipal Order 2015-122.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Bradford L. Shagoratsky to the position of Code Enforcement Inspector in the Neighborhood and Community Services Department.
Summate.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the critically important positions in Neighborhood and Community Services is the position of Code Enforcement Inspector. It's probably the department that gets a lot of your attention, and we need frontline people to go out and to inspect our community. We had some changes there recently, and we went back to an old list, and thankfully we found Mr. Shad Goratsky and had applied before, and we're honored to have him back. And he has experience in a lot of the critical things. The most important one is dealing with authority. He's done that through working in jail, 911 center, and as being a firefighter. Brent is, is he here? No, sir.
All right.
But we're happy to have him nonetheless.
I understand. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
First reading of Ordinance BG 2015-20.
Ordinance relating to Classification Pay Schedule. Ordinance amending the Classification Pay Schedule G for General Classified Employees of the City of Bowling Green for Fiscal Year 2016.
Summate. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. Mr. Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. There is an art form to matching the right pay with the right sets of responsibility and skill levels. We're here tonight because Brent and Mike and me and our wisdom can't, thought that this particular position here needed to be downgraded to a lower classification, I believe, of 115. We feel this adequately meets the new job responsibility of this position, and it will save us some money. We also want, at this point, want to thank Bobby Jo Sexton, who used to be in the upgraded position for all her service for, toward the city. So, we're saving money and reflecting the responsibility of the job. Brent's here if he wants to add anything.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2015-123.
Municipal Order approving the reappointments of Brenda Carver, Robert Dean, Gina DeZell, and Angela Townsend, and the appointment of Rebecca Adams Simpson to the Human Rights Commission.
Summate.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. These are reappointments of four good members of the Commission and the addition of Rebecca Simpson, replacing vacant Jim Adams, I believe, left the Commission before. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Welkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2015-124.
Municipal Order authorizing the sale of approximately 0.91 acre of city-owned surplus property located at 707 East Main Avenue and the adjacent property located on 10th Avenue, and approving a real estate sale and purchase agreement with Gemini Homes Incorporated.
Summate.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. One of this Commission and the city's priority is to not to hold on to property that we no longer have a public purpose for, because we're not into being a landlord or owner. Over the last couple of years, we've done this a number of times. If you all remember, we sold a piece of property on the corner of State and Main. We also did the Cabell, and here we had surplus property behind 707 East Main that we presented to you, and you instructed us to go out to an RFP. If it pleases the Commission, I'd like for Brent Childers to come up and to, again, brief you all about the process we went through and to tell us why staff is making this recommendation today.
Mr. Childers.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager. Part of this is really looking at what can we do to improve the neighborhood. I've stood before you all several times and talked about our neighborhood improvement program and what we're trying to do to put some investment into the neighborhood. This idea was brought to us some time back, and you all made the decision to go out to a competitive RFP. But we felt like this was an opportunity to create a new group of housing stock in this neighborhood. If you look at the history of this neighborhood, it has some of the oldest housing stock in Bowling Green. So, we felt like this was an opportunity to provide some new housing stock in the neighborhood and also be near downtown so we can provide some other opportunities in the downtown area. So, whenever we developed the RFP, we published it in the Daily News, also sent it out to the Realtors Association and the Builders Association so that we had as wide of a net as we could have for solicitation. We received two proposals. Those two proposals came back. They were similar, very similar. The biggest difference between the two was the design. Our evaluation looked at cost as part of it, but also impact to the neighborhood. That was written into the RFP on what we were going to be looking at as part of the proposals. And that's what we used to evaluate. The cost of the two proposals that were submitted, one was 75 and one was 80. So, to us, that was pretty much a tie. So, we had to then go into neighborhood impact. We've started looking at, okay, what is the product going to be? This project's very important to me. You all know where my office is, and so this is going to be on the property adjoining our office. It will not impact our operations. It will be separate. The two pieces of property that we're talking about is, one is the old Big Brothers Big Sisters on East 10th Street, and the other part is what people commonly refer to as the old tennis courts along Park Street. It's the lower flat area down the hill from us. So, our property where 707 NCS is located will still be separated, but that's the property that we're talking about. So, as we started to look at the impact to the neighborhood, we started to look at, okay, the product. So, what's the design of the two? That's where the proposals differed greatly. One proposal called for a very modern urbanistic style of home, which was a nice proposal. I want to commend both of the developers that submitted proposals for the quality and the organization that they put forth in bringing this together. The other design, the one that's being brought before you tonight from Gemini Homes, we felt like blended in with the neighborhood. It had more of a traditional craftsman-style home, and if you look at the architecture of the surrounding homes in the neighborhood, it follows some of those architectural details. So, we felt like the impact to the neighborhood would then be reduced a little bit because we're blending back into the neighborhood. So, once we received the proposals and we had seen, we evaluated it at the staff level, we then had individual meetings with both of the developers. We sat down probably about 30, 45 minutes apiece with them and had a lot of questions back and forth. They had questions of us. We went back and forth, and we used that as part of our evaluation also. So, I stand before you this afternoon to present the proposal from Gemini Homes. We've negotiated an agreement. I think you all should have a copy of that. I think we finished the negotiations sometime this afternoon, going back and trying to finalize the details. But we felt like we needed to make sure, one, we had a product that was the best for the neighborhood, that that's where the focus should be, and, two, that we protected the city. And we made that very clear whenever we were discussing this with the developers. We wanted to make sure that the city was protected so that if something was to happen, we had some opportunities, some set points, some milestones. So, don't look at this as just a property transfer. This is an agreement moving forward with a development plan in place as described in the RFP. That's the overview of where we're at. We put, I'll go back up a little bit. We had it out for 60 days, I believe, was the timeframe that we had had it out for. So, we advertised in February, didn't receive them back till sometime in April, so there was a long gap in time so people could develop proposals. We knew this wasn't just a simple land sales. You know, the city's done that before where here's a piece of land, how much will you give for it? Okay, we move forward. We knew that this was more than that, and we took that focus into it from the very beginning, that this had to be more than just a land sale. This had to be more than just cash. And I'm open to any questions. Gene can chime in if there was anything he'd like to add that I omitted.
Any comments or questions?
I have a question, Brent. This is...
Yes, sir.
The neighbors in the neighborhood, have they given any input?
No, there's been no input from the neighbors at this point.
Maybe informally or?
No.
Will there be any, based on one of our new...
Yeah, you know, there's really a couple of options on how best to do that. One, we wanted to make sure that you all were good with moving forward. There, you know, there's always the option. The city's on this piece of property for a long period of time, and the city could decide, you know what, we'll just continue to own it. It's just grass. We can mow grass. We mow grass all over town. So, we wanted to take to the neighbors a final product, not the concept of something. We wanted to take them something. If you look at the actual impacted property owners, neighboring property owners, we're by far the biggest with the contiguous nature of the property. The CHC Free Clinic takes up a corner, and then there's a couple of vacant houses, so it's limited to just a few. So, what I would propose is, once we get everything settled, that I would reach out to them and make them aware of what our plans are, address any concerns, any questions with them after we had something to show them, this is what we have.
I would think they'd be excited.
I would think so. I pulled, as part of the Neighborhood Improvement Program, I pulled two years' worth of building permit data for the entire census block group. There were five new construction permits pulled for that whole census block group in two years, and those five directly corresponded to five demolition permits. So, what we've seen in that neighborhood is tear-down rebuild, and generally those are rental-based. So, as far as seeing new construction, single-family detached, this neighborhood hasn't seen that for some time.
Brent, my question would be on the process that you went through. When you got the bids back in and the proposals back in, it's my understanding you met with both of the developers?
Individually, yes.
Individually?
We did not meet with them at the same time. We met with one and then scheduled a separate meeting with the other one. But we did meet with both of them and go over. We had a list of questions that we had prepared that we wanted to address, and then some of the questions were specific to their proposal, and some of them were just general to the project itself.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Couple of comments. One is Brent asked me about whether we should have a show-and-tell in the neighborhood. I thought it might be a tad presumptuous to have the neighborhood vote or decide before you all had a chance to decide. We're here, as you all know, just with our recommendation. We take no offense or, if you choose in your wisdom, to do something else. We, as Joe intimated, we do plan to use our new process, if you should choose to approve this or any other proposal, to basically continue to inform the neighborhood that we're doing something. To reflect what Sue said, in our undertow, we felt it would be, either proposal would be a great addition and welcome by the neighborhood. That's why we didn't do a big show-and-tell, because you hadn't had a chance to, you know, add your public will to the process.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Mr. Holland, do you have any comments? I think I can invite you up here to the microphone so everybody can hear.
My name's Brian Holland. I'm a Realtor with Berkshire Hathaway. I'm also a partner in the Brian Clements Proposal, which is the other proposal that Brent was talking about. Our, my main point to y'all tonight, and I'm not going to get into this very, I think a lot of the other bit are for sure, but we feel that the city itself, and I'm speaking directly to Mr. DeFabo.
DeFebo.
DeFebo. Okay, so, that, we didn't have a chance, even though I was the person who brought up the original idea two years ago. Thank you all best to that, and so will Gene. The idea of actually using that surplus property down there to put owner-occupied some type of... This is what we're looking for. As y'all know, I've been a creator of some things down here, although one project didn't work downstate that we sold down there. But saying all that, we weren't informed, we were not communicated with for this type of project, and I don't know whether the Commission understands what we're looking at here. We're looking at, I think, the future of downtown. You know, without... You know, without, with, for the downtown to strive, we have to have housing. When we get housing and families, whatever down here, white collar, blue collar, whatever, we have to have housing. Then the grocery store will come, then next thing you know, we've got a vibrant urban community downtown, and I don't know, that's up to the goals, at least our goals, is to try to help with that, with the building of properties down here in town. This was our first start. But the only way I can describe it is to be disappointed is that, to find out by reading the ordinances Friday or Friday morning or Thursday afternoon that was proposed with the commission meeting tonight, that we weren't awarded the bid. We never had a shot to propose our bid, other than talking to him back here on a one-time meeting. You're looking at the future of Bowling Green here. I think if y'all are going to be decision-makers, that I'm not sure that we can make a decision off a three-person city staff committee. I would rather, and I would like, to see both parties present their product, answer questions to the commission. That way, the commission, instead of the rubber stamp saga which goes on all the time, as we well know, if they recommend it, we approve it. I'd much rather let us come down, we're asking for a table on this, to both parties can come down and actually show our positions off to all the commission, and you too, Mr. Mayor, and then let you all make your own independent analogy on this and make your own decision. You know, so many times, we, you know, I know that y'all are busy people, but, you know, the staff is a good staff, there's nothing wrong with the staff, but this particular piece of ordinance, I guess you might say, I don't think was handled correctly, and even though it's by the bylaws or whatever y'all go by, but we're looking, if one project goes, and we're looking for more projects downtown to get people down here to work to fill up our first mistake downtown. And so that's what I'm after. I'm just looking for an honest chance to propose our product to y'all, let the other, and then let you make an independent decision.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Holland?
Mr. Holland?
Yes?
Have your plans changed on what you're proposing, the same style of house?
No, not necessarily, but I will tell you this, that our project is sold. It's funded and sold, and there will be some personal different designs for each individual family that is wanting to move into there. Okay? So it's not a set-in-stone type of plan, but we're going to try to customize it with each family that's going to be moving in from there, which that, right now, we have a total of five. So, and it's a good start. We have people with young kids. We have families with young kids, teenagers, people going to high school, businessmen, that, and the need for downtown housing is just unbelievable. I think if you'll talk to one to three people, that there's a lot of people, especially in my age group, and I won't mention, but Sue knows, but we'll, that want to move downtown, would love to be able to walk to get lunch, walk to the ballpark, walk to the doctor's office, walk to the pharmacy. This is what it's all about. And for this kind of decision to be made by three staff members, or how many, I feel that we need an honest shot to show our sincerity, and as long with Kelly, too, and just look at our proposals and make your own mind up when that happens, and not be a rubber stamp situation.
All right.
Nothing much other than that. If we, if you decide not to take our proposal, we're fine, but at least have the courtesy. And I've been, I've talked to Gene, Mr., the city manager, you know, I've been in several meetings with him, Kevin knows, and, you know, for us just to find out that we didn't even get to bid or get a shot to even present our bid by looking at it up on the computer instead of having even a phone call is amazing to me, with the future, I think, of housing downtown. So that's my point.
All right, any other comments or questions for Mr. Holland? All right, Mr. Febbo, did you have anything else?
No, there's no need to comment unless the commissioner would like me to.
All right, for anyone else in the audience had the opportunity to want to make a comment about this?
Thanks, Mayor.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I do think it should be noted that the commission is not rubber stamping it. We did see the proposals, we saw your plans.
I understand. I was using that word as in general.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think if you look back, if I look back, you know, that was in general, not for this project itself.
Okay, thank you.
But I think if you look in general, when the city staff recommends something, that ninety-nine percent of the time, I'm not sure about exactly the percentage, but I think it's true.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, like we had the conversation earlier, I'm sure it's over ninety-five percent of acceptance of the recommendations of city staff.
And that's all good, but when you're not deciding on how much we're going to, we're just going to mow the rags up here off the park. This has to do with straight housing, and it's going to affect the future of the downtown urban area. It's all rational with the shot, the show and bargain.
I understand. All right, any other comments or questions? If there's a desire to table it, I'd entertain a motion for that. It would require a second, a motion, a second, affirmative vote.
May I ask one question, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Where does, Brian, Mr. Clement, is he the developer or are you co-developers?
He is the developer. I am a realtor, and basically, the person who brought the idea to the table, to him, we, we will have ownership in part of the property, the whole bunch that's involved. You know, in something, this is the third time that I brought up property to the city to say, institute, no, institute the thing over on County Road, because that's not the thing about his property. I'm the one that came up with the original idea to come up and let some new surplus land to try to get downtown house. All we're asking for is let us present our product, not asking for, if we didn't bid, that's fine also, but we're just asking for a time, come in and let us present our product and answer questions, and then let y'all make your own mind. I don't know anything else that I could bring up. Doug Martin, who is our builder, in general, has his will respected in town, you know, that I'm sure y'all own, he's well-served in town, currently in several projects, built, custom homes, whatever. He's built townhomes, he's built condos, but he knows the product itself. That's why we grabbed him to make sure we had a quality program. We're fully funded, and we're ready to work, but all I was asking for is don't let us learn that we did not get the bid by reading the computer on Thursday afternoon. And I know, you know, that's, that's okay, I guess, by city standards, but I'm just looking for a chance for us to show y'all our product.
Brent, did you have a conversation with the developer in this case, Mr.?
Clements?
Clements, yes.
I spoke with him this morning. He called me this morning, and I spoke with him for a few minutes, and we talked about the proposal and the decision, and he said, okay, thank you.
I will add one thing while he's up there, that I think Mr. Clements asked him point blank, does the city commission have basically agreed to what the audit says and indicate what Mr. Clements is, and that's what I'm going to add to talk to him later. So that tells me that the decision by the commission was already made up before we even come down here to talk about it, just because of the city recommending. Without looking at a project, I'm telling you, this is going to go, this is going to the future here. And let us tell y'all what our thinking is, you know, and then you all can make your own mind, but then we'll look up.
All right, any other comments or questions? Desire to table it? Have a motion and a second on the floor to consider this option, and affirmative vote is to accept the recommendation of the city staff for the Gemini Home proposal, which is five lots. The other proposal was six lots, a little bit different in the price, five thousand, but he gets extra lot. Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Holland, Mr. Kelly, Arnold. Too many Kellys involved, I apologize. Look forward to seeing what you can do up there. Next item is municipal order 2015-125.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting the purchase of Pulstar chlorine brisquets from Spear Corporation of Brochdale, Indiana, for fiscal year 2016 in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars for the Parks and Recreation Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon, Mr. Febbo.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a sole source procurement. As the commissioner may know, we have to chlorinate the spray park at Circus Square as well as our main swimming pool. We have developed and used the system called Pulstar, which uses proprietary product of brisquets made by Spear Corporation. So to stay consistent with our protocol and provide a safe swim environment, we ask for permission to allow us to spend up to sixty thousand dollars to chlorinate both of the facilities and to go with this particular bid.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2015-126.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-48 for professional cleaning services from J. and F. Janitorial Services Incorporated of Somerset, Kentucky, in the amount of two hundred and six thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. Febbo.
We have a number of buildings, approximately eight, that we hire a private contractor to clean for us. Years ago, we found that it's more cost-effective to use the private sector to provide janitorial services. Laura Brown, who is here today, and others have put together an extensive bid to renew the opportunity for the private sector to bid. We've had, we had two valid bidders. We're here tonight, and Laura can answer any particular questions that we have to go with J. and F. Janitorial Services in the amount of two hundred and six thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. It's important to note that they were a prior bidder and had a period of obedience while we tried someone else. Is any question, again, Laura's here.
Miss Laura's come all this way, surely we got a question for her.
Is this the present company that January Torres serves for us now?
No, sir.
Come on up, Laura, we got to get you on TV.
Okay, Laura, I got about fifteen questions for you.
I can't answer your question, Mr. Denning. No, it's not the present company that we have. We had them prior. We've got the company we have now, we've had for the last six years. J. and F. Janitorial was the company we had before the present company.
What is the present bid?
The present bid is one forty's, we wrote it down.
President, Mayor, that is one fifty-six, two sixty-two. So there is a difference in this. This is higher. But if you think about this, there are several things that we had changed in facilities. One being, we added quite a bit of square footage with the NCS building, so that was a big addition to this. We changed some of the frequencies and items to be cleaned. For example, we did a quarterly carpet cleaning in high-traffic areas. Offices weren't included, so for this last contract, we did no carpet cleaning in the office, offices, and they're starting to show some need for that, so that would go to quarterly for all of that.
I don't, I don't have no problem with that. I understand that. I just wanted to get the, what the basic bid was for the present year, and one fifty-six. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir. So there's more square footage and some slight changes in services.
Any other questions?
Can I have one?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Miss Laura, we appreciate it.
As Laura knows, this is not done whimsically. We actually, in addition to the community services survey we do with all our people we serve, we also serve our internal customers, our employees. So every year, they have an opportunity to report back to us how they feel about different services. So we take into consideration some of that input to help us make decisions about how we can serve them in the future.
I'd add one more thing, please, sir. Laura spent a lot of time on this, Maryland, and we had representatives from a lot of the departments, so we felt like we got good input of things that we needed to do. We felt like this is right-sized, this isn't overdone, and again, I believe we're going to have a good service out of this company.
And this is seven different buildings, or eight different buildings scattered throughout the city, is what I understand.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2015-127.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-50 for Wakefield Pond mitigation from TPM Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of one hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-eight cents.
So moved, second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon, Mr. Febbo.
If I could use Mr. Denning as part of my anecdote, I remember almost ten years ago, Joe and I, when I first came to the city, took me over to Wakefield Pond to show me mosquitoes that were there, as well as the green algae and some of the problems in that neighborhood. We haven't forgot that. With Joe and others' help, we have stayed true to the cause and tried to find opportunity, money, and occasion to solve that problem. So we're here tonight. It's been a long hunt. As we all know, this pond is what is called utropic, that means it's in a dying stage. Ponds don't last forever, and this pond is an icon in the community, but it's slowly dying. It's privately owned. We felt there was enough public reason for the city of Bowling Green to be, get involved. Why would we get involved in a public, in a private pond? One is we have a public need for space for our stormwater. Second is that we felt there was sufficient, I don't want to call it hazard, but problems there that caused neighborhood issues, and we thought we needed a bold solution. The bold solution was to drain that pond and do like we did on Covington, make it a larger retention area that will help not only with stormwater, but it will help with our solving neighborhood problems. So we went out to bid, we had four bidders, the lowest, and the most responsible was TPM. That's why we're here tonight.
Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2015-128.
Municipal order approving lease agreement with Bliss Avenue Brewing Company, LLC, for lease of a portion of the public sidewalk located in front of 401 Park Avenue.
So moved, second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon, Mr. Febbo.
I'll defer to Gene, who wrote the lease agreement, to identify for you the essential elements of the agreement.
We were contacted by this company, the view company, I think, that's my understanding, is getting ready to open up a brewery, restaurant downtown. Like a lot of businesses on the square, asked for a sidewalk lease so they could have tables outside. We sent them the normal, typical lease agreement that we've used for all the other establishments. The only thing on the agenda tonight is approving that lease agreement so they can also operate outside on the sidewalk.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2015-129.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a 2015 grant application to the Georgia Pacific Bucket Brigade for fire rescue equipment in the amount of five, up to $5,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second, by Williams, Mr. Febow.
As we all know, we're a community of giving people and often giving businesses. I think a couple meetings ago, we talked about Firehouse Subs making grant funds available for our fire department. Since we're a Georgia Pacific-based community, they too have a grant program to allow us to access possibly grant funds to help our fire department. This is something that Nick's worked on with our fire department, and we're here to ask for permission to submit a $5,000 grant. What's nice is we can use it for what is essentially day-to-day firefighting equipment that we would have to buy from our own fund, and so we're hopefully will get this. Nick is here if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, that's the last item on the agenda, we'll be going in closed session in just a moment, but wanted to thank Warren Fiscal Court for allowing us to use the fiscal courtroom for our meeting tonight. We probably won't have a second meeting in July, but city commission's being, city commission room is being painted and re-carpeted, so thanks again for allowing us this opportunity to meet over here. In closed session, we need to have a reason for that, please.
Pursuant to KRS 618-101B for the purpose of discussion about property acquisition by the city, and KRS 618-101C for discussion of pending litigation against and on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Motion by Hill?
Second.
Second, by Paragon. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?